I'm not sure what the trouble is. He's trying to use a link that I sent him, that I sent to everyone. But for some reason, he's having some...
It works. That's what I used.
Yeah, I'm not...
You can't put him on as a participant?
No, he needs to be able to log on. I can't add him if he's not in.
Okay, we're gonna start and then we'll fold them in, okay? Okay, thank you for your patience, everyone. So we're gonna call the meeting to order. Mauricio, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Commissioner Lama will be joining shortly. Vice Mayor Satchin?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here. Okay, welcome, everyone. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will lead it off. So if those in the commission chambers can stand, very good. Right hand over our heart. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And tonight, our virtual invocation is by Rabbi Baron. So Rabbi, if you're on, and Mauricio, if you could give the Rabbi the floor.
He's joining on right now, Mayor. Just one second.
Yep, and he's on mute. Ah, there he is. It's the virtual Rabbi.
There we are. You ready?
We are ready. Thank you, Rabbi.
Great. Hello, everybody. Dear God, Master of the Universe, as the entire world trembles with uncertainty, we stand humbled before you this evening, and we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We're mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and a guiding spirit which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 23 years. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes, as you, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws after the great flood of Noah. These laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity, universal laws that provide a framework of law, order, and justice which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to perform this sacred duty. As we stand today before the approaching holiday of Hanukkah, which teaches us that we should never be deterred, even by the most challenging circumstances, and lead by spreading goodness and kindness and more light to the world. Almighty God, please provide us with a consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, sensitivity, and the patience necessary to succeed so that we leave a legacy of positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. Please guide our city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all our citizens into the future. And may they continue to serve as positive role models for a beautiful community. Almighty God, these times, we do not take our health and safety for granted. May everyone gathered here tonight and all the residents of Sunny Isles Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity. And let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. I think you should get your own satellite channel. That's what I'm... You know, I see a satellite... I see a satellite future for you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just reading off the wind of your sails, you know.
Oh, that's very nice. Thank you, Rabbi. All right. Have a great evening, and tell Toby we said hi, and all right. Thanks so much.
Will do. God bless.
God bless. Thank you. So Commissioner Lama, welcome. Good to see you. So, okay. I'm gonna read my opening statement, and then I'm gonna say a few words, and I'm gonna explain why we're having our meeting this way. I'm gonna actually ask our city attorney to explain it after my opening statement. So, but welcome, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and thank you for joining us tonight. Please ensure that your microphone is muted to avoid interrupting the proceedings tonight. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to use the Raise Hand function, which can be located by following these steps. If you're using an iPad, tap the center of your screen, tap on the three dots located at the right-hand corner of your screen, top right-hand corner, and select Raise Hand. If you're using a desktop, click on Participants at the bottom of your screen. It opens a side window listing all the participants. On the participant screen, click on the three dots located in the bottom left-hand corner and select Raise Hand. If you called in and are listening on your phone, dial *9, raise your hand, and the city clerk will call you based on the last four digits of your phone number. When called upon, please state your name and address for the record. Speakers may also use the chat function to submit their comments and questions. These chats are only available to the commission, and the host or chair will read it into the record. The chat function is located at the bottom of the screen. Please make sure to type in your name and address for the record, and speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. And if you don't adhere to the chair's advice, your microphone will be shut off. There are changes to tonight's agenda, and here they are. Add-on items 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D, which are commission meeting summary meetings that cover our prior commission meetings and our budget hearings. 10N is a resolution accepting our election results. And then we have 12B, which is a discussion item regarding street flooding and stormwater pumps. 12C, discussion regarding noise pollution. 12D, discussion regarding candidate qualifying requirements. And 12E, a discussion regarding city commission rotation schedule for physical attendance at meetings. Obviously, Alex and I are not on that rotation schedule tonight. And then we have 12F, which is a discussion regarding Golden Shore's entrance and exit gate. We're gonna defer item 12A, which is a discussion regarding temporary political signs. May I have a motion to accept these changes? Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye? Okay, our changes are made. Okay, let's just... We'll do our approval of the minutes first, and then I'll say a few words. So we have minutes from our prior commission meeting and budget hearings. Mauricio, you just want to state with the minutes covered?
The minutes are from the first budget hearing, which was on September 8th. The virtual city commission meeting on September 17th. The second hearing on September 18th. And the most recent commission meeting on October 15th.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept those minutes? Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor? Aye? Okay, the minutes are carried. Okay, so the question is, why are we having a commission meeting with three commissioners sitting in the chambers, no one from the public, and Mauricio and a few tech people? So Mr. City Attorney, could you please give us a brief summary of how we're dealing with the current state regulations regarding public meetings?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, commissioners, and residents. Several past attorneys general of the state of Florida have issued opinions that mandate that a quorum be physically present for all public meetings. And at the beginning of the pandemic, Governor DeSantis issued an emergency order that permitted us to meet virtually, where everybody... Nobody had to be present physically, but we could all meet virtually. Unfortunately, his order expired on October 31st. So what we've done is we have come up with this hybrid situation whereby a majority of the commission will meet in person at City Hall, and everyone else will participate, as we're doing right now by Zoom. And until such time as the city manager determines that there's no longer an emergency due to the pandemic, we will continue to meet in this fashion.
Okay, thank you. It seems silly, but I think, you know, basically, complying with the law is not always easy. So I just wanted to make a few comments tonight. We're getting a major resurgence of the pandemic again, as you might have seen on the news. I can tell you again, in my role at OneBlood, it's happening. And so, you know, the news reports are accurate. It's not quite as bad in Florida like it was in July and August. I think for a variety of reasons. I think, number one, because we got hit hard once already, people are more vigilant, and I think if you look around, you can see it. I also think that, you know, we've got warmer weather than folks in the north, and more people are outside. But it is absolutely devastating in the Midwest right now as we speak. And, you know, my fellow blood centers that service there, you know, we're shipping a lot of convalescent plasma now to the Midwest. And again, this is the first time that they got hit in a meaningful way. So they're probably adapting a lot like we were adapting back in July. So this is a second wave for us down here, but I think we're a little bit more suited. The good news is, you know, the hospitals understand a lot more now about how to deal with the virus, and less people are dying based on the number of people that are getting infected. Still terrible, because you still run a really big risk of getting critically ill. You know, folks do it. They have the potential to get critically ill if you get sick. So still take it extremely seriously. I mean, I know I've preached this almost every commission meeting, but, you know, I see it firsthand. I know the numbers, and, you know, when it happens to you, it's hard to believe. And I've got, you know, I think we probably all at this point have friends that have gotten ill, but, you know, I've got a very dear friend who right now is in the ICU up in Boca, and she's on a ventilator. And, I mean, and two weeks ago, she was fine. So, you know, it can happen to any of us, and she's not that old. She's 63. So my point is, it can happen to any of us. So please, you know, just be vigilant, be careful, wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands. If you do all those things, you know, in all likelihood, you're gonna be fine. And, but, but we're going through another resurgence. So for Florida, this is like the third wave. And it doesn't mean we're not gonna have a fourth wave or a fifth wave. That's the irony of it. I mean, as much as we've gotten talk of the vaccine, you know, it's gonna take time to distribute that vaccine and to really make sure that the efficacy of the vaccine is gonna stand. So, you know, I said it in June, we probably had a year. I'm gonna tell you, we're in this for, you know, nine to 12 more months. There's no doubt in my mind. I'm hoping next year, you know, mid-year, it'll start to taper off a little bit. But in the meantime, you know, I just really urge everyone to be careful and to basically, you know, take the proper precautions. So that's it. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody knows... You know what I know now. And, you know, like I've said many times, I'm in a unique perspective here, and so what you're hearing is real, and we need to be careful. So that's it for me. Okay, so tonight, let me see where we're gonna start here. So we've already got some special presentations. So we have our item 5A is our 2020 Desktop Calendar Photo Contest winners, which we always enjoy because we get these great photos. So who's gonna present that? Is that Sylvia?
Actually, I am going to hand over the reins to Elaine Yish, who is our photo contest guru. So I'm gonna let her go through the winners, and we have some photos to share with everyone.
So Sylvia, you had me fooled. I thought you were like reporting live from the park, but I guess it's a backdrop, yeah. Oh, well.
I thought I would, you know, do something a little fun.
It's good, it's good. You know, you mixed it up. It's better than the pictures, you know, in my room behind me. So, okay, Elaine, how are you?
Good.
Elaine, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes, I'm waiting for the PowerPoint.
There we go. We got a PowerPoint coming up. Mauricio? So I'm gonna tell a story about Elaine while we're waiting, really quick. So when I first met Elaine, she said, "What do you get when you go to a bowling alley?" And then she said, "Elaine." And I never forgot her name from there. So there you go. There's my Elaine story.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. It is my pleasure to present the annual photo awards for 2021. Each year, we receive hundreds of fantastic photos that seem to be the best collection ever, only to be amazed again the next year by the variety, talent, and imagination of the photos submitted. This year, we had 104 photographers participate, a new record high. The number of quality shots collected made it increasingly difficult to choose the winners. Ultimately, composition, color, contrast, and resolution were the deciding factors on which shots earned a spot on the 2021 Sunny Isles Beach Desktop Calendar. The photography winners in order of appearance. The backdrop behind our cover is entitled "Good Morning Sun" by Beatrice Singer. This photographer is back for another year and has the honor of being our cover shot. Why? Because her shots are always crisp and imaginative. Beatrice is a nature photo artist, and she clearly loves her subject, the natural world in her city, Sunny Isles Beach. The next page is the introduction to our city. It's called "Sunny Rays and Days" by Irina Iksanova. Irina is a new contributor this year with a beautiful and clever photo of the southern end of our city. This picture shows all that makes our city great: the condos, the single-family homes, the parks, and the beach, with glimpses of neighboring Oliver Park and the village of Bow Harbor in the background. The next photo is January, and it's entitled "Between Two Worlds" by Alejandro Meneses. So much talent shows through here with Alejandro behind the viewfinder. One wants to jump into the sparkling water. You can almost feel the grains of sand under your toes on that very peaceful beach. No wonder visitors to our shores often return as residents. Who wouldn't want to put themselves into this scene on a permanent basis? February, "Solitude at Sunrise," Eirlan de la Haya. Eirlan comes back again and again with unique angles of objects we see every day, but maybe do not appreciate for their simple structural beauty. He's a talented photographer who loves the ocean and everything in it, including our Newport Pier. March, the picture for March is called "Golden Glow" by Jimmy Baekovisius. A new photographer to the contest, Jimmy captures a big reason our city is called Sunny Isles Beach. The architects of these high-rises may have imagined on paper their creations glowing from nature's glorious sunshine, but a picture of the reality is worth a thousand words. April, entitled "Beach Days," Matias Porparado. Native chickie huts. You've walked by them on the beach dozens of times. Did you ever look at them as Matias does? We thank him for this new perspective, showing our beach in the morning light and bringing out all the texture and beauty of the palm thatch. This is a spot where visitors can relax and fall in love with Sunny Isles Beach. For May, we have a photo entitled "Dazzling on the Ritz," Gladys Enriquez. Gladys took the time to enter our contest with a shot of one of our newer buildings. This is a rare and beautiful angle of our shoreline. Look how seamlessly the structure fits into our beach and ocean environment. We are glad she captured this lovely South Florida day for all to enjoy. June, "Things Are Looking Up," Harry W. Fromm. Our favorite non-ingenarian, Harry, flew all around the world during his career with Pan Am. But where did he choose to call home? Right here in gorgeous, walkable, and neighbor-friendly Sunny Isles Beach. Harry is one of our longest-running contributors, and he has sent many artistic photos through the years. Often, when looking for documentation of some corner of our city, staff will say, "Look at Harry's folder. Didn't he take a shot of that?" July, "Summer Color," Nicola Kodorowsky. Color, that's Nicola's signature. He captures the ocean, resort pools, and everyday Sunny Isles Beach scenes that pop with color and grab your attention. His use of light and shadow is superb. We cannot get enough of his artistry. His photos are used again and again in many of our publications. For the month of August, we have "The Penthouse Spiral" by Franklin DaCosta. I'm lucky to be able to preview photo submissions before the judges. And when I opened this one, all I could think was, "That's where I want to be." Trying to capture an architectural component of a building is always a challenge. Franklin showed skill and imagination in accomplishing this shot. What a delightful journey we take as we follow the spiral down to the beach. September, "Rainbow Glow," Nathalia Olivata. If you're going to submit one photo to a contest, make it a winner. Nathalia should be proud to know that so many people sent us the same great scene, but only hers passed the test for clarity and composition. This photo brings out the child and delight within us all. October, "Painted Sky," another one by Jimmy Baekovisius. Here we are treated to another great photo that is as lovely as any painting from an art gallery. Not the bright splash of light this time, but more subtle hues. Jimmy knows how to set up this shot for the best exposure and color. Our pier has never looked more artistic. November, we have a shot called "Daylight Breaks" by Ekaterina Kromova. What is the favorite subject of our photographers? A beautiful sunrise over the ocean, of course. The colors of our sunrises are many and varied, and the judges could not resist the golden colors in this shot. Katie is a true photo artist who has sent numerous stunning shots over the years and invite viewers from around the world to jump into the scene and live the Sunny Isles Beach life. December, "Magical Lights," Beatrice Singer. Beatrice is a magician with the camera, and with a snap of the shutter, she has captured angles, light, and contrast through and around both natural objects and architectural forms. This colorful photo collage shows off her unique vision of the world around us and her love of still photography. The photography page is another photo by Matias Porparado called "Pastel Coast." How lovely even a cloudy day can be in our oceanside home. This shot is tempting us to go for a walk along the sand and see what lies past that far bin. Matias earned two spots this year because of the quality of focus in his photography and the great composition of his shots. The "Connect With Us" page, entitled "Nighttime Reflection," is by Evgeny Melnik. Nighttime photos are tricky. Evgeny has taken such a fantastic shot that it is popping off the screen in three dimensions. We see the clouds over the ocean beyond the buildings on the shoreline. We wonder, can we reach out and skim our hands over the tops of the trees below? It's night, but it's bright. Our eyes see it, and we are amazed. The last page in our calendar, a new photographer again, is entitled "A New Day." Sandra Anchoa took this picture. It's called "The Contrast Over the Sunrise", but just as lovely, with steely blue sky with a hint of pink. Sandra has framed a very soothing shot, showing finely focused details of our coastal world. What a pleasant surprise to finish our photo journey by finding yet another talented photo artist living right here in our beautiful city. Winning photographers may pick up their awards and copies of the calendar beginning Monday, November 23rd during regular business hours on the first-floor lobby of the Sunny Isles Beach Government Center at 18070 Collins Avenue. Residents of Sunny Isles Beach may also get a copy of the calendar beginning on that date outside under the first-floor parking garage. Thank you for your time, and thank you for participating in our contest.
So before we move on and before Elaine leaves us, I just wanted to say a few words, if you don't mind indulging me. So some of you may know, I'm sure all of you don't know, but we are unfortunately nearing the end of an era. Elaine is retiring her position with the city and will be leaving us in early December. I'm gonna try really hard not to get emotional. She has been with the city for over 20 years, working in multiple departments, and has had a hand in so many projects throughout the years, too numerous to count. She's worked closely with the commission, with our former administrative services department, with the city manager's office, and most recently with my department, Culture and Community Services. She has been a tremendous asset to the city, a true example of dedication and commitment, and has always strived to provide the best possible service and product in anything and everything she does. There is so much that we could share about Elaine and the impact she's had on her colleagues. We're going to miss her very much, but we are happy for her to enter this next chapter in her life. And we have a small token of our appreciation that Susan is presenting to her right now in her office.
Very sneaky.
Elaine, thank you for being amazing. We will truly miss you.
Thank you. This is lovely. It's very sneaky.
I am so glad I told the bowling story this evening. I didn't even realize that was gonna happen. See? I put you on the spot. I embarrassed you a little bit, and you get a, you know, and you get a token to take away tonight. So Elaine, thank you very much for everything. I mean, you and I know each other a long time, a long, long time, you know. But I'm thrilled for you and your husband, and I think, you know, all the best. But thank you so much for everything that you've done at the city.
Sylvia, I just want to chime in on one thing here. I don't want to burst Elaine's bubble on this, but I checked with council, and we did find out that legally, I have to accept a resignation before it can happen. So I have a feeling she might be here another 20 years.
Good luck with that.
There you go. Yeah, exactly. Exactly, exactly. Okay, well, thank you, Elaine, and congratulations. Thank you, Sylvia. Okay. Okay, very good. All right, we move on to item 5B, which is a charitable donation presented to Kivas Kane Community Foundation for fill-a-bag stations.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, I just want to say a few words. We are excited to support the Kivas Kane Community Foundation and their fill-a-bag program. We have partnered with them to install three fill-a-bag stations at highly visible beach access points. Those are Pier Park, Sampson Oceanfront Park, and Billown Beach Access. These stations provide reusable buckets to empower our beachgoers to turn their visit to the beach into a meaningful cleanup opportunity. Every engagement, no matter how small, will impact the quality of our beach and the enjoyment of all of our residents and visitors. This endeavor is just another step in our determination to being e-committed. And I am excited to say that we have with us Manny Rianda from the Kivas Kane Community Foundation, who is excited about this partnership and donation as well. And he just wanted to say a few words.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioner and honorable team from Sunny Isles Beach. My name is Manny Rianda, and I'm with Fill-A-Bag. And we work with coastal communities to help them bring awareness to the impact of marine debris and beach litter. One of your residents, a young lady named Irina Zerkova, she's a high school student. She started her own little cleanup crew there after attending a beach cleanup. It's called Sunny Isles Beach Cleanup. And she raised her hand, and she's like, "We'd love to have a fill-a-bag station at our beach." So this very impressive young lady got the stakeholders together. She brought in Colin, she brought in Sylvia, Chris as well, and she made it happen. So now the city of Sunny Isles Beach has three fill-a-bag stations. Fill-a-bag stations are set up at beach paths to allow people to turn an ordinary walk into a meaningful cleanup anytime they go out. And the idea isn't to really make you into a beach cleaner. Your thing may not be beach, you know, picking up marine debris. Maybe it's bringing your own water bottle everywhere you go, or your bag to the store, or refusing single-use plastic, but it's something. This kind of gateway activity is one that really brings about change and is very impactful. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. And it's a real honor to be partnered with the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you, Manny.
My pleasure.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Manny. And, okay, Sylvia, anything else on this one?
No, that's it.
Great, okay. And, okay, we move along. Thank you, Manny. Thank you. Okay, we've got no, we've got nothing under zoning tonight, but we have some ordinances for first reading, and so we'll move on to Item 7A. Mauricio?
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, entitled "Departments", providing for renaming and separation of certain city departments, providing for servability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, so as our city continued to evolve and adapt, there have been certain aspects of our operations that must evolve and adapt to changing conditions within our city, some caused by state legislation and others by the evolving dynamic of our growth. To that point, I have decided to merge the Planning and Zoning Department with the Code Compliance Division into the Development Services Department. This endeavor acknowledges new challenges, such as the need for an investigatory arm to help address the proliferation of short-term rentals in our city. We intend to properly expand the operation of this new department to make the planning, zoning, and compliance services more cohesive and robust as they will be engaging during the cycle of development from the initial aspects of planning through the enforcement of city regulations. And therefore, we recommend the adoption on first reading with the revised organizational chart and the creation of this new department.
Okay, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I think we're evolving with the times. So I certainly, you know, support this coming forward, but any comments from the Commission? No? Okay. And Mauricio, are there any, any public hearing on this one? Or any public speakers? No? Okay. Okay, with that, I will take a, I will take a motion? Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lama. Mauricio, I think this is a voice vote, since it's an ordinance?
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading is scheduled for December 17.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to Item 7B, which is amending Chapter 129, entitled "Communication Facilities."
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 129, entitled "Communication Facilities", code of ordinance, amends Section 129-4 to permit stealth facilities on exterior walls, providing for servability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, and effective date. This is first reading.
Mr. Deon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Commissioners, communication companies have been inundating the city with applications for permits in order to install small wireless facilities throughout the city. What we're trying to do is to encourage them to move off of Collins Avenue onto the side streets or elsewhere. Currently, the Code of Ordinances does not permit any antennas on exterior walls on any building within the city. All this is trying to do is to provide allowing antennas as long as they're covered so that they match the exterior of the building. It does not mandate that anybody place one of these facilities on their building. It merely provides for an option if a building owner, condominium association, or whatever would like to have one of those on there with one of those communication companies.
Thank you. One of the things we face along Collins Avenue is technical clutter. We've just spent millions and millions of dollars and a lot of time and effort to underground all our street wires and our utilities. And, you know, unfortunately, we can't completely stop, or we don't have as much flexibility as people think we do in managing wireless communication devices. And with the advent of 5G, I'm sure folks have read about that, it requires a lot more antennas, requires a lot more devices to get 5G coverage, where you get tremendous internet, but you also have this issue of a lot more antennas. And so I think what the staff has been doing is looking at creative ways to try to mitigate some of that, and so we don't have this technical clutter like you've seen in other places. So this ordinance obviously is a step in that direction. Do we have any comments from the Commission?
I want to say something now. Can you hear me? Yes? I just want to commend Ed and staff for this because I can tell you that this has been something that's been somewhat of a war. We talked about this before, but just as a reminder, specifically, you know, Senator Pizzo tried to fight this for us. And other commissioners have gone to Tallahassee to fight for this, at Bontecito, to try to fight against this. Basically, for those that are hopefully listening, I can't see who it is, but, you know, the fact that they can come in and just in the middle of the night, put a pole wherever they want to is really just horrendous. And being able to put these on buildings where the building could potentially make some money because they would pay them to put it on their building is really a great, great compromise. So, you know, thank you, Ed, for this, and I hope that they do work with some of our buildings, especially the older buildings that can use the money to get this off of Collins Avenue. Because once they start putting them up, it's just going to be horrific. So, thank you, Ed. I appreciate that very much. I'm sure the residents do as well.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to second a little bit what Vice Mayor Vetching said. It's, we're in a tough spot. Obviously, you know, the state preempt us, and some of these telecommunications companies have some sort of right, you know, coming from the state to put up these antennas. So, we're trying to mitigate and manage the situation as much as possible. So, but yeah, it's upsetting, you know, that the state could just, you know, dictate pretty much, you know, that we have to allow these and not be able to manage, you know, what goes into our city. So I just wanted the public to understand that, that we're preempted and the state kind of dictates that we must accept in some sort of form these antennas.
Thanks, Alex.
Small comment. Has the experience of some of these other coastal municipalities been very positive? Have the telecommunications companies accepted this type of alternative or stealth? Or is it being implemented? Or is this just kind of a new alternative approach that we're trying to initiate?
Commissioner, I don't have any information about what other communities are doing, but Claudia actually and Chris were the ones that came to us and said, "Why don't we come up with an alternative to try and dangle in front of these communication companies in order to try and get them to place their equipment off of Collins Avenue?" The problem is Collins Avenue is managed by the Florida Department of Transportation. They're the ones who get to issue permits for these types of facilities. And the legislature, as the Vice Mayor and Commissioner Lama had said, has pretty much given them carte blanche to put up whatever they want, wherever they want. We've been working with FDOT to try and get them to cooperate with us to try and encourage these communication companies to look at other alternatives, and we're continuing to do that. This is just another tool in the toolbox, if you will.
We, I can tell you, the answer to your question is, I don't know, and I don't think there are other communities. There may be a couple that we're not aware of that are taking the same approach. But I do know that we have gotten a, in very recently, in the past few weeks, maybe a month, month and a half, we have broken through with FDOT on a significant area of cooperation with them to limit this. And what it took is putting together with the help of Paul Abbott well over 50 situations over the past couple of years, and I think that number is actually a lot greater if I go back a couple more years till we started the undergrounding of situations where low-voltage contractors and companies have, just because the records aren't great, you know, broke various utilities underground. And we finally got in FDOT's cooperation to give us a say. We don't have a legal say, but they will listen to us as to the placement of these poles to the best of their ability and have some, you know, some say with them on every application that comes in. And, I mean, we've offered everything from helping design this right off of Collins, helping to, like we're doing now, and this is totally with cooperation of a building that wants to do it. We're not forcing anything upon anybody, but we're looking for flexibility because there is no room underground under the sidewalks, which is the total state right-of-way. The edge of that sidewalk is the end of the right-of-way to put these utilities, and they're jam-fold right now.
So, of course, I'm very pleased to see, you know, an alternative. The last thing we need is clutter we've been through with our undergrounding. I'm just hoping that we can work cooperatively, or there are going to be alternatives, these are alternative options for the telecom companies, and obviously, the private sector, the private buildings will take up the mantle of that and accept that. So, very good, very good.
Well, we can say it'll take eight months to get a permit for Collins and two months for a private building. So, that might be, that might also be an incentive. You know, again, but we don't have a lot of leverage here, unfortunately, but we'll try to create it where we can get it. So, but, you know, this is the irony of it. I think a lot of times, I know I get calls from the public, and, you know, they think we're ducking accountability, but, you know, the state, the state has a, it's kind of the overlord, you know, and we are fourth in line on the governmental chain, the federal government, the state government, the county government, and then the municipal government. And I think we all know what flows downhill. So, but anyway, so we'll, you know, at least I think we're trying to be proactive in managing some of this. And it's ultimately frustrating because we're spending millions and millions of dollars on beautification of Collins and creating a safer environment with the undergrounding and everything else, and, you know, and we get stuck with this. But, again, I applaud staff for taking, you know, for taking action. So, with that, Mauricio, are there any public comments on this one?
Mayor, enough of this.
Okay, I will, I hear a motion. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Goldman. Mauricio, a voice vote?
Right, Mayor, just to clarify, the first, the motion was made by Commissioner Goldman. I need a second.
The second was by Alex.
Okay.
By Alex, okay, I'm sorry. I thought I saw Jennifer raise her hand. Okay.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner D'Scara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yeah.
The ordinance is adopted. Secondary will be December 17.
Excellent. Okay, we move on to Item 7C. Our last ordinance?
70 is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Article 1 of Chapter 195 of the Code of Ordinances, entitled "Anti-Semitism and Enforcing Laws", to provide additional examples of anti-Semitism in Section 195-3A and additional examples of anti-Semitism related to Israel in Section 195-3B, providing for repealer, providing for servability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Ed?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, due to the diligence of Commissioner Lama and his work with the Florida League of Cities, he brought forward-
I'm sorry, Miami-Dade County League of Cities.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Miami-Dade League of Cities, I apologize.
No, it's fine.
He brought forward last month, last meeting, a resolution regarding this topic. We reviewed the Code of Ordinances and determined that we already had several of these examples in the code, but that there were several new examples and definitions that needed to be included, and that's what this is. We're basically supplementing and expanding examples of anti-Semitism in this codeman.
Alex, do you want to expand on that at all?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ed and Valerie for helping out with adding some of these examples and some of the language that was not already in our code. So now by adding this, you know, it will give a clear, let's say, picture, and they'll define some of these examples and some of the language. It'll be a little bit more precise, and it will help law enforcement, you know, kind of identify what constitutes as anti-Semitism and be able to act accordingly. So just so you understand, the resolution came, it was a resolution sent to us by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance. It was sent to Miami-Dade County League of Cities for us to adopt, for different municipalities to adopt. So, the language was very similar, but like I said before and Ed mentioned, there was some language that was not in our code, and now we're including that in our code. So, thank you very much for your work, the back and forth, and the help with that.
Excellent. Thank you, Alex. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I think that the fact, this is coming from the Miami-Dade League of Cities, I assume that in other municipalities are also engaging in adopting something similar, and that uniformity of the law across the counties is a good thing. That way you're not, you know, experiencing different standards across the counties. So, I'm glad that we're joining the effort.
Yeah, actually, Jennifer, I'm gonna ask, you know, when I'm on the next call with the Miami-Dade County League of Cities, I'll ask if other municipalities are adopting the resolution or taking some language from Ed and including it to their ordinance, existing ordinance. So, I'll follow up to see. But, you know, a lot of the language is very similar. I would say 90%, right, Ed? Was, it is very similar from what I saw. So, I think that this is not something new. I'm sure that the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance has already, you know, they lobby and they talk to the different municipalities. So, I'm sure it's all very similar across municipalities.
Great. Okay, any other comments from the Commission?
Ed, Alex, thank you for bringing this up. I think that often people get confused as to why we keep sort of bringing up anything having to do with anti-Semitism because they ask, "Well, we already have this on the books." And especially with Holocaust education week just finishing up, and the fact that there is, again, a rise in anti-Semitism all over the world and the US. It's important to look at this every now and then to make sure that it's updated and that it's back sort of in the ears and eyes of our residents and certainly our police department. So, thank you for bringing this forward, Alex.
No, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, with that, Mauricio, any comments from the public?
That is, Mayor.
Okay, I will take a motion. Alex, you want to lead it off since you brought it forward?
Yeah, so moved.
Do I hear a second? Second, okay. Mauricio?
Commissioner D'Scara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Yep, sorry about that. Yes, Mayor Shaw, sorry.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Secondary will be December 17.
Excellent. Okay, that is it for our ordinances for first reading. We have no ordinances for second reading tonight, so we're gonna move on to our resolutions, and that would be Item 10A. and that would be item ten A.
Ten A is a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of nineteen eighty-four to expend forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice for the subscription service of automatic license plate reader system, replacement and purchase of components related to the CCTV project, and other miscellaneous products related to police enforcement. And if you give me one second, Mayor, I'll bring on Captain Gravenetti.
Excellent. Forfeiture funds are always a welcome spend. You're on mute.
How's that? All right. Evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing or requesting permission to utilize forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice account, any amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. These funds are all permissible by the rules and have been certified by the Chief of Police, and it would be used to purchase additional police radios, a well, well utilized database with our license plate readers for our investigative unit, as well as parts for our CCTV camera Phase One, which are getting old and some of them are starting to fall apart, so it could replace part of those parts.
Excellent, thank you, Mike. Any questions for Captain Gravenetti?
No.
Okay, okay, Mauricio, any comments from the public?
Not for this, Mayor.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Aye, okay. Motion carries, item ten B. Thank you.
Thank you.
N B is a resolution approving the expenditure of budgeted funds and not to exceed seventy-five thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents for the purchase of software licensing and/or products from Superior and LLC for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one for police software system maintenance and support. And this is from our Chief Information Officer, just one second, Mayor.
Well, well, if Derek can't use the technology, we're all in trouble. That's all I can say.
He's coming on right now.
All right, impressive, Derek, very impressive.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. This is the item that you see every year for annual software maintenance for the police software system for CAD and records management.
Okay, any questions for Derek? Mauricio, any public comment? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
No vote.
Do I hear-
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, motion carries. Thank you, Derek. Item ten C-
Item ten C is a resolution approving the purchase of a twenty-twenty Eldorado Aero League shuttle bus from Atlantic Bus Sales.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, this item is to purchase a new shuttle bus for the city's shuttle service. The intent is to have five shuttle buses. We currently have three that are from two thousand and twelve, their lifespan is typically seven to eight years. So, this would be to phase out one of those two thousand and twelve buses. And the price is actually slightly higher from the last bus that we purchased, one because of, you know, an increase in rates, but in addition, we have included in this quote, a partition built into around the driver for safety as far as security and, and COVID precautions. So, that is built into this quote as well.
Any questions for Sylvia?
I have a quick question. Sylvia, how, how long do these buses typically last for us?
The lifespan is typically seven to eight years. We don't usually get quite that far because they get a lot of stop and go in our city and often, you know, through bumps or different construction things that are happening. So, about seven years is what we typically get.
They're, they're great. I know a lot of the kids use them to get to school, so they're really a necessity for us.
Yep.
I have a question or comment. So, I, during a meeting this week, I had asked Chris how the ridership is going, and he's indicated that our ridership in, in this bus system has increased. So, is that, have you seen the numbers go up or, you know, increase overall?
Um, so they've definitely increased since we first got back running, since COVID. Are we back to full that we were prior to? Not quite, because we are still doing some social distancing in the bus, so we can't sit every single, we're trying to still space them out when they come on there. But every route is being used, every bus is being used, and when we have to, you know, if, if a route is impacted because of bus maintenance, we definitely hear about it. The residents are counting on the service.
So, it's been very, a very effective form of transit, so that's, that's very positive.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mauricio, any comments from the public on this one?
Not this.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed, like sign? Okay, motion carries, item ten C. We move on to item ten D. Thank, thank you, Sylvia. Item ten D?
N D is a resolution approving an agreement with Team Contracting, Inc. for sidewalk repairs.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, annually, we inspect all of our sidewalks, curbs and gutters, and we contract with, we have been contracting with Team Contracting to make those repairs, and their contract had expired. We are piggybacking from the City of Fort Lauderdale bid that they put out for the same services, and we're asking for an amount up to seventy thousand dollars to get us through this fiscal year with repairs of sidewalks, curbs and gutters, citywide.
Thank you, Susan. Any comments for Susan?
No.
Okay, Mauricio, any public comment? With that, I'll take a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, Susan, you got your sidewalk repair funding.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Susan. We move on to item ten E.
N E is a resolution approving an agreement with Team Contracting, Inc. for ADA parking at Senator Gwennmar Golas Park. And this is Rick, our city engineer, one second, Mayor.
Okay, Rick, you're coming on. There you are.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager and staff. First item I have tonight is actually addressing some ADA deficiencies we have in the city. A while ago, we had notice from an attorney that we had some areas that needed to be corrected, and this is actually the last piece of that puzzle that deals with handicap parking at Gwen Margolas Park on the west side. So, what this'll do is we're gonna fix the parking while we're at it, we're gonna have to modify the sidewalk, and since we're in that parking lot, we're gonna fix some drainage issues, and then overlay the whole parking lot, so it'll be one clean sweep and be done. So, we've worked with team on a few of these, and this is the last one.
Great. So, in the IT world, we call that scope creep. So, I guess it's scope creep on our, on our initial repair. Any, any questions for Rick?
I just wanted to get some clarification for the public, because I, I know that there have been certainly people that have asked me, why do we always create these, you know, parking spaces where it seems everything is fine? And I was just hoping that perhaps Ed, you can clarify why we're even making changes, what has changed, and why are we using resources for this, because for some people it may seem like a, a waste of money.
Well, in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, there are certain specific requirements that are necessary, in this case, for parking. And we were advised, and correctly so, that our, our, our disabled parking at Gwen Margolas Park was not up to those standards. And so, we're, we're fixing that, and as Rick said, since we're out there, we're going to fix the sidewalk issues and some drainage issues at the same time. So, in order to comply with federal law, we need to make these changes.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that the public was clear that this isn't just because we, we feel like it, we have to and we should correct it so that it is in compliance. Thank you.
Okay, Mauricio, any public comment on this one?
Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay, motion carries. Item ten F.
Resolution approving change order number seven, agreement with Luna's Construction, Inc. for the Gateway Center, for the Gateway Park Center project.
Okay, Commissioners, what we, what happened is as we went through the final TCO inspections with the Fire Marshal at Gateway Center, they realized that the way the building situated with the community center on one side and storage and, and usage on the other side with the parking garage above, that it qualified as one building, and as such, it all had to meet the fire, current fire alarm requirements. When it was originally done, the part, the levels within the parking garage were, did not have the alarm, sounding alarms and the flashing alarms required. So, in order to get through the fire department inspections, we had to come in and do a change order to upgrade the rest of the building to include fire alarms and both sound and visual to meet codes. So, this is a request to, for approval for the funds needed to do both the design work and the construction work. Actually, I take that back-
Okay.
Just the construction side, the design-
The construction work, right.
On another one. We're also asking for a time extension to the contract, because one of the items we wanted to evaluate with the building was an emergency generator system, and they can get very costly, and the best way to analyze it is to have a building where you have records of power usage. So, then you can size the generator to meet the power usage that you have versus your, your, say, your panel amperage, which is the maximum you could ever have. So, you may end up having a generator twice as big if you're just doing panel amperage. So, we want to extend the contract. We had looked at this originally, and then we put it on hold because we wanted to get the building operating, because the, when we spoke with the designers, that was their recommendation is, what's your usage? Tell me your usage, and then we can give you a, a generator number. So, we decided to get the building operable, get the AC running and the lights running, track, you know, a couple months worth of time, probably do a boost to the number based on the potential to have maximum occupancy in the, in the case of an emergency, have the kitchen running and other things, which we won't have running short-term at this point due to the virus concerns. So, that's what this covers. It covers a time extension to allow us to do that analysis, and also the, the extras needed for the fire alarm.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Rick?
So, this will not be the last change order, basically, because of the, the contract extension?
Correct, there'll be one more further generator installation if we decide to go that route.
And even though we have a TCO, we're still not gonna open up Gateway pending this emergency status that this, this, the order's in, right? We're not, we're not yet in a position to open up Gateway, the, the Gateway-
Chris?
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct. We're not open yet.
Yeah, we're not gonna open up Gateway. Okay, any comments, Mauricio, from the public on this one? No. Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve? By the Vice Mayor, do I hear a second? Second, okay. All in favor? Aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, item ten F. Item ten G.
G is a resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with Perkins and Will Architects, Inc. for professional architectural services for interior remodeling of government center lobby and Gateway Park for internal space build-out.
Rick, you're up again.
So, this is the additional services that the engineer and architect need to do the design and permit modification for the fire alarm system. And as part of this, we're also, also asking for significant funds to make sure that we have enough money in the purchase order to cover the contract amounts plus the reimbursable expenses that came along with the project. Our past, last month, I believe, we came in with a change order. Unfortunately, I did not analyze the amount of dollars that came out of the PO for reimbursable expenses, which then left us short of what we needed to complete the payment to, to the sub, to the architect. So, that's why we're asking for enough money, so we won't, we won't have to come back again for a few dollars here and there, just to close out the contract at the end of the day. Because the way our contracts are set up is it's a base fee, but then reimburseables are extra. So, when we issue a purchase order for the base fee, when you get to the last couple invoices, you've run short of money. So, that's what this'll correct, so it'll allow us to stay current.
We understand. Thank you, Rick. Okay, any, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Mauricio, any public comment? Nope, hearing none, okay. Larissa, Vice Mayor?
Motion to move.
Motion to move, do I hear a second? Second, okay. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, ten H is a resolution approving a first amendment to agreement with the same head over LP for peer review services of the professional overpass bridge of Collins Avenue at one hundred and eighty, the street.
Okay, Rick, you're spending a lot of money tonight.
Yeah, that's kind of what I do with capital projects, is spend the money, but we try to do it wisely here. What this is it for is, as part of the DOT Bridge Project, we had to hire a peer review engineer to do a second review on the structural analysis of the bridge. The original proposal that we obtained from him was for, was based on the initial schematic drawings for the bridge. So, I don't know, if you recall, halfway through that design, we ended up giving the designer more money because DOT came up with additional review requirements that had to be analyzed. So, what this is, is, is some money for the peer review engineer to also include, including his review, the review of the final structure that he, that has more elements to it than originally was anticipated, and more, more review issues. Mostly with the, the big thing with DOT is they're used to bridges that are wide open, so when you come back to inspect them every two years, which we will be required to do, everything's right there, and you just look around, you can see everything. With this bridge and uniqueness of the, of the structure and the shell, they want to make sure that we're not- we're not hiding anything that can't be looked at in the future. Because, and especially with like the panel connections and things like that, because they don't want to have 10 years down the road, you can't tell if the panel connections are good and then they start falling off into the roadway. So that kind of, that kind of work, plus the interior, um, bridge structure itself has to be inspected, so you have to have hatchways where people can get actually inside and walk through box culverts and make sure everything's fine. So that's what this is for, that's a little more money for the, uh, peer review engineer to complete his work on this. And I, on an overall, a project right now is, we're wrapping up 90% plans on it, uh, which we hope to have submitted to DOT by the end of this month. Then there'll be a review process of about 45 days and then we'll be submitting 100% plans and going out for, uh, basically final state approval and funding on it, which we're hoping to have by beginning of April.
Thank you, Rick. So a lot of what's going on here is, you know, better be safe than sorry. After the FIU bridge collapse, DOT has put in a lot, a lot more requirements for pedestrian bridges, how they're built, why they're built and the review process for building them. And that's really what we're experiencing here, so. Okay, any comments regarding, uh, resolution 10H? Hearing none, um, do I hear a motion to approve?
That's all moved.
Okay, got it, do I hear a second? Thank you, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Rick. Um, item 10I.
10I is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of San Ysidro, approving the termination and release of restrictive covenant for the declaration of restrictive covenant in lieu of unity title recorded on August 22nd, 2019 and official records of the Miami-Dade County.
Claudia, como esta?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Um, this is, um, termination of a covenant in lieu of a unity of title for a jointly owned, uh, private docking facility at Puenciana Island. So the all owners of the docking facility, uh, they want to terminate the covenant in order to, uh, enter into another, um, covenant with new owners. So this is required as per the recorded documents that you as a Commissioner, uh, as a Commission actually, um, take this action.
Understood. Any comments or questions regarding this?
Question? Um, hi, it's actually, it's a little hard to hear you, I think it's your, your headphones. Uh, but for, again, just for, for the public to understand why we would even be involved in something like this and, uh, what are the limitations for the, for the peers at Puenciana Island? If you could just quickly clarify that, please.
Can you hear me better now?
A, a little bit, but I think next meeting you need a new microphone, because we had the same problem last meeting.
All right, I, I will, I would. As I was repeating, basically these docking facilities, uh, because there is a limited amount of docking facilities allowed in the Puenciana Island. Owners, neighbors, actually, they decided to enter into this covenant in unity of title, in lieu of unity of title, sorry, uh, in order to join, eh, the ownership of a docking facility. So we have two owners, uh, joining into these legal documents. And then when some of the owners decided to terminate it, they had to come back in front of you in order to terminate the unity of title, the covenant in unity of title of this, uh, facility. Because this, again, we are talking about, um, a joint, uh, ownership of a facility. Uh, whenever they come to terminate that, it has to be approved by you. Um, then we have a new set of owners that will enter into a new covenant in lieu of a unity of title for that same docking facility.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other comments? Okay, any questions from the public, Mauricio? No. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Okay, do I hear a second? Second, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 10J.
10J is a resolution confirming the balance of transfer development rights currently held in the TDR bank accounts by the City of San Ysidro Beach and private owners.
Um, this is our annual reporting for the Transfer Development Rights Bank. Um, no major, uh, changes have occurred. Um, the only two added payments, uh, that they were received, uh, this year were for the two enclosed balconies that, um, you have approved a couple of years ago, um, in the mansions of Apollina. Uh, we maintain our, uh, TDR bank currently at 525,838 square feet and 275 units and the private account of transfer development rights hasn't had any change, uh, since last reported.
Thank you, Claudia. Any questions or comments for Claudia on the TDR bank? This is pretty perfunctory, we do this every year. Um, any comments from the public, Mauricio? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, we go on to item 10K.
10K is a resolution approving an increase in spending authority with the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company for maintenance and repair services.
Honorable Mayor and Commission, good evening. Uh, this increase is needed, um, in order to process the remaining invoices that the city has received, um, for 2019, 2020. Uh, it's an increase of $30,000, um, which would increase the total spending authority for the fiscal year to $130,000.
Okay, I guess we're buying a lot of tires, so.
Yeah, a lot of repairs and maintenance.
Here. Okay, any, any questions or comments for Tiffany? Okay, um, any comments from the public, Mauricio? None, with that I'll take a motion? Do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Item, item 10?
10L is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Calvin Giordano Associates, Inc. To provide construction engineering services for the streetlight project.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, um, this is a first amendment to an agreement with CGA. They are performing CEI services for the street lighting project that is on, um, Collins Avenue, A1A. It's a requirement by FDOT to have these, this work, um, inspected by, uh, companies that does exactly this. Um, and we, because of the delays from FDOT, we have extended what the original contract was. We expect to be finished in April and this amount should get us through to that final completion date.
Excellent. Any questions regarding this resolution? Any comments from the public? No? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve? A motion by the Vice Mayor, do I hear a second? Second, all in, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item, thank, thank you, Susan. Item 10M.
A resolution ratifying the declaration of local emergency imposed by the City Manager on November 8th, 2020 and the termination of a local emergency issued on November 10th, 2020 due to tropical storm Peta.
There's not much more to say on it, yeah, this is just to ratify the declaration and the termination of the emergency.
Okay, it's housekeeping. Um, any questions for the City Manager? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Hello?
Do I hear a second? Second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, item 10M carries. And add on item 10N.
10N is a resolution accepting the official results of the November 3rd, 2020 general election, declaring Luris Sfetchen to be elected as Commissioner Seat 1, declaring Dana Goldman as Commissioner Seat 3, discharging the candidacy board for runoff election, scheduled installation of officers. Uh, Mayor, this is, as the resolution says, accepting the official results, which were officially certified by the supervisor of elections from Miami-Dade County on, uh, November the 13th. And for the benefit of the public, I'll just read very quickly the vote tally, uh, for both races. For Commissioner Seat 1, Justin Fisher received 3,243 votes, which equates to 45.1% of the votes. Luris Sfetchen received 3,962, equating 54.99%. Total votes for that seat were 7,205. And for Seat 3, uh, we had 7,516 votes, of which Greg Capra received 2,060 votes, equating to 27.41% of those votes. Dana Goldman received 3,979 votes, which equals to 52.94%. And Fabiola Stupisant received 1,477, which equals 19.65% of the votes. Uh, this resolution also sets the date for the swearing in of both Vice Mayor Sfetchen and Commissioner Goldman for December the 3rd. And the reason why it wasn't done at this meeting is because our, our code, section 26-10, uh, states that it has to be done 30 days from the day of the election, which is December 3rd.
Thank you, Mauricio. Um, first and foremost, I want to congratulate our winners. Um, you know, the, with that old who song, you know, meet your old boss, same as, meet your new boss, same as the old boss, right? So, um, so, um, you know, I, I appreciate, um, you know, the service both Commissioner Goldman and Vice Mayor Sfetchen, um, you know, gives to our city. Um, I also want to congratulate the other folks that did run. Um, it's, it's not easy to run for office, as you probably learned. Um, and, um, you know, I always say the toughest part of being an elected official is running for office. Um, it's just, you know, it, you know, it's a tough process and I don't think this race was any exception. Um, so, but again, I want to, I want to congratulate the winners and, you know, our commission will remain intact for at least a couple more years. So, um, look forward to the swearing in and, um, with that, is there any other comments?
Good to be back.
Congratulations to the winners.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also think, you know, there's something to be said for, um, y'all are on a presidential election cycle and it's a, it's a different kind of race, because a lot more people come out and, um, and, and, and it's just different. You know, um, Jennifer and I are on the off cycle, you know, we're on, I guess, the gubernatorial cycle. Um, but it's much different when it, when it's a big national election like we've had, you know, given the turnout and given, um, and so it creates a different dynamic, which I think, again, I think it's, I think it's a, makes the process, you know, interesting and difficult at the same time. So with that, I will take a motion to, um, to approve, um, the results of the race. Okay, so moved by the Vice Mayor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, second, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't always hear you, so it's great when you raise your hand. Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, look forward to the swearing in on the 3rd. Uh, motion carries. Okay, with that, we will move on to our discussion items, which we have a, we have a number of discussion items tonight. Um, item 12A was deferred, which was regarding temporary political signs. Again, every political race brings with it this rash of issues associated with running for office. So it's always, it's always interesting. Um, but we're going to go on to item, to item 12B, which is one of our add-on items here. And 12B is, um, a discussion regarding street flooding and stormwater pumps, which I'm sure our, um, our City Manager can enlighten us on. So, okay, who, who, who wants to talk, who, who wants to kick that off? Commissioner Goldman?
So we've just gone through our king tides and, and, and extreme storm events and while we had a capital, uh, budget that was introduced, I think we're, you know, looking at moving in a, in a new direction, or at least enhancing our stormwater, uh, you know, capabilities and infrastructure. So I'm a big advocate, obviously, of stormwater, uh, management and, uh, and I wanted to get a little insight and feedback from our City Manager about, you know, how we're looking at the, the near term and the medium and the long term in terms of stormwater pumps. We have the stormwater pump on the north end, um, but what are we doing in the Central Island to mitigate the effects of, again, flooding and, and ultimately, you know, about climate change?
Chris, you want to, you, you want to discuss this? Yeah, obviously, we've had a lot of discussion around this, but, um, the, the one thing that I would always caution is I always have a saying, you can't build freeways for rush hour. So in other words, you know, what I've noticed sometimes is it rains and people expect it to drain in 30 minutes, or, you know, king tide or no king tide. And I think we have to be careful managing expectations, but at the same time, I do think that, um, you know, Chris has had a pretty solid plan in, um, in continuing to beef up our infrastructure, you know, to, um, to, to maintain, you know, our ability to deal with these events. So Chris, you, 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 you want to kick that off?
Yeah, um, I, this, this may have gotten started. If, if you all recall, I think a week or two ago, I sent out a, um, a memo, uh, an email, an, an email that, uh, was triggered by, uh, a complaint about, uh, you know, some of the, uh, some, some of the water events that we had over the past two weeks. But one of the things I've realized over, um, eight years back here now, um, well, first of all, um, we are still, under the conditions we have right now at this day, we are still one of the best um, areas where flooding, where it does happen, subsides within the day of the tides going down and, and, and up and eventually, you know, it calms down and it, it doesn't take very long. Uh, and that's, you know, our, our major area is the Central Island area. Now, over the past few years and more recently this past year, um, we made, um, we, we finally made a breakthrough with, um, with, with the improvements to the Golden Shores area and the pump station over there. Um, and I think the biggest, um, uh, stopgap measure that we've done is the portable pumps. Um, we, we've got residents in Golden Shores that have been here very stable for a very long time. And, um, there, 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 there are people like Patrick Dunn that I've worked with since back in the beginning of the 2000s that have been here and know when things are working and when they're not. And, um, we, we came across, um, a lot of things that were worse than what I anticipated back at the pump station. So, um, you know, I've diverted, as I mentioned, to the Commission, funds from, you know, just rebuilding in, in a way that I, I think we can avoid. Where we've upgraded every aspect of the pump station with the exception of one that will take a project and that will be the, uh, upgrade of the generator, uh, over there. It's, uh, fuel methodology and the new technology that we need um, in terms of the electronics, um, to, uh, to make it, um, automatic again. But in the meantime, um, the, we, we've got the small motor on the pump there that's been, um, that's been updated. We've got the large motor, which is going out for a new motor. that's been updated. We've got the large motor, which is going out for a new motor and rebuild. And in the meantime, we will have a borrowed motor. But even without that, we've got the, uh, the portable pumps that we bought this past year, which can be used anywhere. Um, for example, if we had water remaining in the central island area after the level of flooding that we had there, um, the past week, um, they could have been sent in there to pump out water. We didn't need to do that because the water went down and pretty much a day after the event was over. Um, however, um, the, the, the other challenge, but nothing is bigger than what I want to say about the central island area. We are still in the midst of studying with the permission of F D O T. If you recall, we appropriated, um, environmental engineering funding to look into the state system, which just in recent years has had even any level of backup along Collins and Sunny Isles Boulevard, just, just in the vicinity of that intersection. So we're working on that, um, also, and I'm not too concerned about that flooding because it's not anywhere near as, uh, substantial as the central island area. And when I say central i- island, for those that don't know, it's everything north of one seventy-fourth up to one eighty-third. And I say north because the job we did just a few years ago on one seventy-fourth street has worked perfectly. And my only regret is that Jerry Goodman didn't live long enough to see that and central island happen. Because he was at every meeting when I started coming, when I came back in two thousand twelve about those two issues. He solved one very well. Um, in the meantime, um, we spent the better part of the last five, six years going through a process of, I'll call it upgrading, uh, cleaning out. And it's, it's, it's a whole different process to clean out a deep well than our routine annual cleaning of catch basins. These wells are called deep wells because they, in theory, the, the water that's being, um, flowing into it is going to saturate in the limestone down below. And that's where it's gonna, you know, it's gonna spread out and we're gonna be able to, you know, in theory, have more water in there. But if you never clean out a deep well, the dirt, the silt, the debris that gets in there is going to seal that off that it's not working. Um, we've spent over the past years, and when I say years, I mean, since I've been back, probably in the vicinity of seven hundred thousand dollars to do two significant things in all the wells in that entire area, to flush them out and clean them out totally, to, to, um, realign and in some places replace, rebuild the upper part of the well where there was a, 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 a number of, of wells that couldn't even be accessed because of some, some issues with the, with the design on the top of the wells. Now, after doing all this, we can't make it any better. The, so I went back to something that might be little known. I've talked a lot about it recently, but we had plans to also do a pump station, different design with newer technology than the one in Golden Shores. But we had plans that we started, um, started to put together, um, around the year two thousand and were completed approximately by the year two thousand and four. And, um, while we were doing Golden Shores, these plans were inclusive of a pump station for the central island area. Well, that plan never got built. Uh, I can't tell you why because I wasn't here and I won't get into that and speculate right now. But, um, in the meantime, somewhere along the line, um, wells were put in. The problem with the wells is, um, they've got a limited capacity. The, the, the beauty of the pump station is that it's made with high pressured pumps built in that even in the king tide, the highest tide, with the heaviest rain and significant flooding, that pump station has the ability to still push that water out properly and legally into the intricoastal. After it goes through a process, goes through, goes through, um, uh, uh, garbage catchers and strainers and things before it goes out there, but it takes that water out. This last storm, which was one of the worst ones I've seen in the eight years I've been back, we did not have any flooding in Golden Shores. And in, in, in recent years, you know, we, we, we've had a number of problems there because of problems that were not seen in the pump station in Golden Shores. What, um, the direction I'm gonna go in now is I think the time has come that we take that same approach, a little bit different design, the, because of those wells were added in. I've got a set of plans to work from. I'm gonna bring in an engineering firm. We're gonna look at the old plans and we're gonna match them up with this, what is there now. And I think we've got a good game plan. One of the, um, uh, one of the benefits I've had in doing that is, um, uh, and, and, and frankly, this is probably the only positive thing that can happen in this COVID. Um, one of the engineers was in charge of the Golden Shores rehabilitation back in two thousand and one. Um, is back in the country and his home in Aventura for the next year at least, if not more, uh, because all his jobs that are in Central America and in the Arab world, um, are all on hold now. So he's back over here, um, helping me out a bit with, and with, um, with, that's his expertise, his drainage. So frankly, I'm going back to where we started with the central island area, uh, with the improvements that are made that will make it even better. And at some point, I'll be coming to the commission with a plan that I'm pretty confident at this point's going to include a, a, a pump station in the central island area. Hope that's not too much.
Oh, I mean, it's, you know, it would definitely be in by next year's budget process, right, for the capital?
Yes.
But it's a long-term proposition, right? It's a couple of years before that, something like that.
It, it, we, we pulled off, it, it may be just, we gotta sequence this stuff. Um, it, 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 it may not be too long, but you know, I can't predict it now. I was surprised, um, you know, Gold, Golden Shores took, I don't know, it took about two years, two and a half years, um, the whole project. Um, this would not be, I don't think this would be as difficult as Golden Shores, uh, because of the infrastructure that's there. Um, but look, we gotta start somewhere. The, 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 the thing that'll save it is I've got a set of plans that need to be modified, not starting from scratch.
What about the place?
Also, Chris?
Yeah?
Yeah. Uh, I was gonna mention Dana also, we, now we have the portable pumps, but we also have the land, you know, so, you know, we're starting, we're kind of starting ahead of the game, you know? It's not like we've got to, you know, appropriate some land from somebody or, you know, do some eminent domain or, you know, but I think we can, you know, Chris has got some plans where it taxes on to the end of the park, so, um. But, you know, what's interesting here is, as Chris was pointing out, is that it's almost like you're staying ahead of the tide. You know, like if you can pump it out faster than it can come in, it's circuitous because it's coming in no matter whether we like it or not. But if we can pump it out, at least we can mitigate it. You know, you're, you're never gonna kill it altogether, but at least you can mitigate it. And I think that that's what we're seeing in Golden Shores. And, um, and I, I've been actually pleasantly surprised. The injection well projects we did, I think they were well intended at the time, but frankly, the groundwater gets saturated, the wells get dirty and it's, and, and it just, you know, it doesn't work in certain instances. So that's the bottom line.
No.
Right, I mean, that's the, the stormwater pump option, obviously, is the past, present and the future, right? And that's, that's the future. So it's, it's, I'm, I'm very pleased to see the, uh, you know, the getting the ball rolling on this. I think it's a very important and significant project for the city to undertake.
Yeah, and I think, like I said, the other issue is that, at least with the pumps, you know, we can also have the portable pumps as additional backup, you know? So Chris has, Chris, Chris has, you know, procured some more of those recently. And so, you know, in the worst case scenario, at least we've got some mitigation, you know? But, but the main thing is, you know, I always try to manage expectations of people. You know, you're not gonna have like just a little puddle and we have these, you know, super high tides and, and five-day rainstorms, you know? It doesn't, you know, we're gonna have some water for a little while. And it's like, my phone starts ringing an hour after the rainstorm, why isn't the water gone, you know? And that, it just doesn't work that way. And it's not gonna work that way, you know, you know, in the future. So, but I think we're, I think we're getting our arms around it and I applaud Chris for, you know, kind of going back to the future and dusting off the old plans, so.
And, you know, again, you have the portables, but the long-term, the long-term solution is a permanent pump station, pump station like we have in Golden Shores. We, you know, that's definitely a very, uh, important, important step.
Yeah. And all I'm saying with the portables is if it takes a year and a half or two years to get through the engineering, the permitting and the construction, at least we have some, at least we've got some mechanisms for mitigating it, you know, on a temporary basis, that.
Can I just add something? Mayor? I just want to, uh, uh, commend Chris. I, he gave me a, a, a very, very thorough, uh, uh, inspection of the pump station in, in Golden Shores and, and it was very informative. But I encourage anybody that is, uh, has two hours, oh, check it out. Uh, it's very cool when they turn it on and it starts pumping out. And, and Hugo, you know, this is probably one of the positives of COVID, that we're able to engage with Hugo again. He, he seems very palpable, Chris, and, uh, you know, if you can get him, definitely. Uh, I, I, the, the good thing about Golden Shores is that we learned a lot about what, what works and what doesn't work. So I appreciate you staying on top of this for, for so long and continuing to, to work as hard as you.
Okay. Any other comments regarding, um, stormwater pump? Okay. Um, I want to thank the city manager. Okay, that's item twelve B. Any comments from the public, Mauricio, on twelve B?
On twelve B, yes.
Okay, we move on to item twelve C. Noise pollution.
Okay. So, um, on the campaign trail, there have been a lot of outcry and concern about, obviously, traffic conditions and, uh, noise pollution. But essentially, it's come to the, to the fore that there are a lot of these drag racing events and nighttime and exhaust system mufflers or, or loud noises that are through these, uh, different cars. Um, and so I've received a lot of comments and, and discussion from residents and I think some might be speaking this evening on this topic. Um, but I wanted to have a, a discussion about that, what we can and cannot do as a city uh, in terms of combating noise pollution. And, uh, you know, how, how difficult the situation is and just really wanted to open up that discussion point. I mean, clearly, we've talked about this, Ed, about the, um, and Valerie, about the, um, the issue of modi- aftermarket modifications of cars. Um, and that, you know, that's a state statutory issue, but then there's a question of enforcement of those, of, of that statute. So I wanted to just open up the discussion because, again, a lot of people are talking about that noise pollution and that, 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 um, that factor that's going on in the city, so.
So, just so I'm clear, so we're talking about cars. We're talking about cars that are too noisy based on modifications that, that, is that, that, that's what you're hearing?
Yes, that's what I'm hearing, that there are a few bad actors, let's put it that way. A few rogue operators that have, that have modified their exhaust systems or their mufflers or the cars and they're racing and there's a lot of noise emission and a lot of people concerned or upset about that. And then generally speaking about, you know, the drag racing and the, and that, that, you know, the speeding or the drag racing. But I've heard specifically about this issue about the, the loud noises about the cars.
If I may chime in on this, I, I mean, I live along one sixty-third street and I know this has come up in, in commission meetings before when the chief was on, uh, that it sounds like they're speeding. Sometimes they are because I can also hear them zipping, zipping along. But a lot of the time, it's, it, even if they're not speeding, it's these, these mufflers, these vehicles, they are so loud and, and they're not the majority of vehicles, but it's very disruptive. I, I live it daily. I, I'm sitting in my living room now and a night goes by that I don't hear those vehicles going by on one sixty-third street. I've spoken to the police about it. I understand that, that the, they, they used to be legal, that there used to be like some decibel level thing that they could do, but that then now they can no longer do anything about it. And that most of the time, it's not even a speeding issue. They could be going ten miles an hour and, 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 and sound like, like a fireworks display. It's, uh, it, it's incredibly disruptive. And even with the, with the, um, with, with the curfew in place, we still hear them at two in the morning. Uh, and if they're right by the bridge, you know, they're out of our jurisdiction in, in two seconds anyway. Uh, you, you have to mitigate whether it's worth engaging, uh, in, in that speeding incident. But again, as the chief has said before, most of the time, it's not a speeding issue, but the noise is, is most certainly an issue, speeding or no speeding. Um, it's, it's disruptive. It echoes off the buildings. I mean, I, I live it. I live it every day.
So that's what I've been hearing. So I live a little further back in the gated community, but I've been hearing about this pop, pop, pop and these noisy mufflers. And this, this is basically cars are being modified and that's what I'm hearing from residents who are living and live, living with this kind of high pitched noise and a big nuisance factor. So the question is, how prevalent is this? How much of a nuisance is this? And what we can do as a city, can we do something about it? Whether it's issuance of citations or some, something to, you know, to address this problem? So I think that's it.
What I would suggest is, yeah, what I would suggest is, why don't we, why don't we table it and hand it to the chief and let him come back and give us a report? Because ultimately, I don't, you know, I don't know what the rules are. I don't know what he can, you know, to Jennifer's point, Jennifer seems to be more informed than I am on this one. I don't know what the rules are or what we can and can't do. So before we speculate and decide what we want to do, let's find out what we can do. Um, simply because, um, you, you know, what drives me nuts is the boom boxes, is the boom, boom, boom. I mean, it goes like, you know, I live on the water and it goes across the water and it rattles the windows of the house, I can tell you. Um, sometimes these cars with the, with, you know, with the boom boxes. But, you know, again, like I said, I don't know what's, what, what, what we can or can't do. So, um, so I'd almost rather, like, if you want, you know, let's ask the chief at the next meeting to look at it. And, you know, maybe Ed's got to get involved and, and come back with some suggestions.
Why can't we hear from some of the residents? I mean, we have a bunch of speakers, so they want to, they'd like to have.
Oh, I didn't know. Okay, yeah, no, no, if the residents want to talk, great. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, we're not gonna have any answers for them today, that's all. But, but that's okay. No, no, if we've got, I didn't realize that we've got residents that want to speak, so. Mauricio, go, go ahead and queue them up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll start off with the comment cards that we received. Um, we have five. Um, I'll start off with the first one. This one is from Yuvmila Nemsteh. Her address is one seventy-one-one North Free Road. Um, this is in support of discussion of noise pollution in Sunny Isles produced by the racing raging cars that can be heard everywhere in the city at any time. I believe our community needs safer and quieter atmosphere. Please let us know how this problem can be solved. Thank you. Next comment comes from Anastasia Panpilova. Address is one sixty-four eighty-five Collins Avenue. Says, can we do something about the noise in the city? Cars pass by and make so much noise, it's disrespectful and affects quality of life and sleep of our residents. Next comment comes from Loria Raisman, two sixty-one, one eighty-eight Street, Sunny Isles, four, three, three, one, six, zero. I live in Golden Shores where when I walk my dogs, I can see cars flying on Atlantic Boulevard. Plus the noise from the cars on Collins Avenue is unbelievable. I have a condo in Aventura and I don't witness this driving behavior there. Cary of Orlando, one sixty-four eighty-five Collins Avenue. Car motors way too loud. I used to leave my sliders partially open to listen to the ocean and enjoy the fresh ocean air. I live on the eleventh floor and with the doors closed, I can't hear my TV. It's so annoying and upsetting. They rev their motors at the traffic light on the corner. Next and final comment is from Arden Coniukov. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing the name. Two thirty-one seventy-four Street. Uh, his comment is, please make our city free from illegal cars and bikes making excessive noise. And I'm sorry, just one more second, mate, because we did, we did receive some emails also. I just want to make sure that they're not related to this item. I just want to make sure that they're not related to this item. One sec. Okay, this one is from Silvian, Silvana Folichicchio. I'm so sorry. I wanted to make a comment regarding the noise pollution, point 12C on the agenda. I think we have so many things happening in Sunny Hills Beach right now that wasting our time and resources for such a minor issue is not important right now. The noise we are talking about actually lasts about, at most, a few seconds. We should concentrate on solving major issues like street getting out of businesses up and running again, for example. Thank you for your attention. Okay, this, this next comment is related to noise pollution, but not necessarily about cars. Uh, I can move it to item 13 if you'd like. I'll leave that for the end.
Yeah, you can read it if you want.
Um, this one also. So that, that's it for the noise pollution regarding cars.
Okay, what about, um, a, 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 any of our participants online? I thought, I saw one hand raised.
There is one person.
Oh, who is that?
Andres Rishkov.
I don't have that. Andres Rishkov.
I see two attendees with their hands.
Give me one second, mayor.
There's one.
We've got Andre and Rumi. Yeah.
Okay, Andre, go ahead. Uh, your name and address for the record, please.
Andre Rishkov.
Go ahead with the comment.
I've been resident in the city for the past 12 years. And just to higher level, what I can say is, the city been nice and there was no ever reason to actually raise the noise, uh, uh, ordinance in the city. Because the loudest thing you can ever, could ever had was a semi truck going through the city. But in the past year, year and a half, there is a new trend of the people making their cars loud. It's not just modifying mufflers just to be loud. They're making them extra loud to the point whenever your ears are about to bleed. And that's, we're talking about people sitting in the restaurants and along the Collins Avenue, enjoying the glass of wine and enjoying the nice view and everything else. And the car goes by and for the next minute or so, until the car disappears, you cannot even talk to the next person. And everybody else after that is just wondering how the hell that individual can be allowed to ruin the evening for so many people. That's as, as, as good as it gets. Other people, as you've heard other mentioning, being, uh, I'm living on the eighth floor and it sounds like in the middle of the night, my car, the car is about to park in my living room. And so on and so forth. Never happened before, never been there. But this started about year and a, year and a, year or so ago, and it's a new trend. Back then, it was a one car. Since then, it was every month, there is a new car being added up. So if we continue on, there's going to be like 40, 50 cars driving throughout the city. And we're going to be like in the airport or in the middle of racetrack. What do you want to be either as a city where people come over just to relax versus sitting and listening to the car rumbling and trying to wonder whether, what's going to happen? That's my question. I'm sorry. I, I had a longer citation, longer proposition to talk about, but I'll keep it short. It's getting worse and worse every single day. And if nothing's going to be done, there's going to be, there was no reason to be, be taking point to that a while ago. But now there is, should be a reason.
Thank you, Andre. Thank you. Okay, Mauricio, um, next public speaker?
Okay, next speaker is Patricia Alvarez.
Hi, good evening. I was calling because the concern that you have about the noise, and I understand those people that are saying, but we have to understand something. Many of these noise are occasional for the fact that we live in a high end. And like, for example, in my building, I can hear sometimes when the Lamborghini or the Ferrari or the Maserati turn the cars in. And that's something that we're not going to be able to avoid when you have this high luxurious condominium and people own five and six vehicles. So, certain things come hand by hand. I think honestly, in the middle of a pandemic.
Patricia, you, you did it. Hello?
Sorry, Patricia, you, you, you.
Hello? Can you hear me now? You lost me?
Now we hear you. We, we lost you when you said in the middle of a pandemic.
Okay, in the middle of the pandemic, that we are concerned about noise when it's so many other issues that we should be addressing for the city. Because the city, even though it's small and we are doing good, is many other situations that can be addressed besides the noise. I think we should be less disconnected of the reality of the actual crisis that the nation is going through and be more concerned about other topics that should be addressed in these kind of meetings. I think that the noise, it should be something like you said, maybe the chief of the police can address. But it's not that, I understand that you can hear the cars, but all that come with the amount of buildings that we have and the amount of people that are living in the city and how big the city is doing and the construction that we are having. If we have replacing a two-story building with a 48 and 450 units per, per building, you're going to have more, you're going to have more noise, you're going to have more of all those things. So I think at this point, just to wrap it up, the fact that we are talking about noise pollution in the middle of a crisis that the country is living, isn't all the time, guys. I think we should spend the resource of the city in helping the people that are very, it's a lot of people. Why we don't help the small businesses, for example? Why we don't help the people that are losing the houses? Why don't help the people that are being evicted? It's so many other issues that we should be addressing. The food distribution, the city is, it can spend all those resources that we are going to spend, probably that police officer and that equipment to meet the noise you're talking about, a hundred grand. We can have that money spent in other issues that's going to be more beneficial and it's going to heal, it's going to help the people that are in need in this moment in the city. Not everybody in Sunny Hills is a billionaire, a millionaire. And we should be helping and be more humane and concerned about those human beings that were here before all these billionaires arrived and try to help those persons in need. That was my comment.
Thank you, Patricia. Well said. Mauricio, next speaker?
Here is, uh, Rumi. Your name and address for the record, please. Rumi, go ahead.
You have to come off mute, Rumi. You're on mute.
Oh, sorry. Okay, uh, I want to say exactly what Patricia said, but she was before me. So do I have to repeat? But she was saying very well about the noise of the car. I'm agree. Because some people make, uh, give money to make a special noise on their car. And also have a, many times I see next to me, they're waiting on the red light, but they put gas, gas, gas just to be noisy. But that's the people. And I think about this noise, like the police here. If they find out, if passed through them or something, they have to stop them. I don't think this is, uh, for the car, different car is different noise. If it's BMW, it's a very, very different noise than. To be here. But what Patricia says, I'm just agree with her. I was ready to say the same things. Many other issue is most important at the time. Many. Small business.
Thank you, Rumi.
People, this. Welcome.
Okay. Mauricio, are there any other public speakers?
Uh, one more, Fernando. Uh, your name and address for the record, please.
You've got to bring him up as a panelist. Fernando, you're on mute.
Hi, how are you? Fernando Petinero, 100 Baby Drive. Um, I was, uh, watching the session. Congratulations to the winners on the election. Um, but also I, I'm very concerned about the COVID-19 issue, how it's growing so fast. And I was, I was wondering if there is something that the city could do to, uh, help prevent or assist to prevent, especially in the use of, of masks on the street. I see tons of people walking around like if nothing is going on. Um, I was wondering if we can do something to help people remember to wear a mask. At least remember, remind them. Maybe use some of the resources available, I don't know.
Um, we're actually on noise, but I'll speak to the COVID issue. So we, um, we, we do, um, um, the, the police have written a lot of warnings about masks, I can tell you. Um, um, like, like, like hundreds, if not thousands at this point. So the city's pretty vigilant about this. If you were at the beginning of the meeting, you know, that, that was my opening comments was, you know, we need to maintain vigilance. I completely agree with you. Um, it's getting worse and worse and it's going to, you know, it's not quite as bad as it was three months ago, but it's getting there. You know, it's getting there. And, um, and again, you know, as a city, we constantly remind our residents to be careful. You know, distance, um, at City Hall, we've got all the appropriate measures in place. You know, we check your temperature. Um, and, and, you know, and all over our public media, you know, you know, we're constantly trying to remind people. Um, it's never enough. I agree with you. It's just never enough because, you know, there's such a mixed feeling amongst the public, you know, between, um, I, I, I get half my emails say, you can't make me wear a mask. And the other half say, we're not being vigilant enough making people wear masks. You know, so it's a really, it's just a really tough issue. It's a divided issue. But, I mean, you know, I, I personally have been in the camp of being conservative from the beginning. I've been, you know, I've, you know, I've been preaching this from the beginning. I think, I think, I think the commission is very like-minded on this issue as well. I mean, you can see, um, you know, our commissioners in chambers today are all wearing masks. So, um, but, you know, Fernando, I think you bring up a good issue. Um, and, and I think, um, and I think we're, we're going to continue to try to be as vigilant as we can. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mauricio, any other public speakers on this issue?
Uh, yes, mayor, one more person, Anna Urann. Please use wisely the city money in more important issues. I agree with the lady Patricia. Please stop this waste of time. Focus on what is important. And that's it for the comments. There's no one else that has raised their hand.
Okay, yeah. And so, again, I don't disagree with the speakers. I think we might have some things more important, but the fact is, it's a police issue. Okay, you know, we can sit here and debate it all day long, but the fact is, it's a law enforcement issue. So, um, you know, so, again, I think would, I think the outcome of this discussion will be, we will raise this issue with the police chief. And the police chief can give us some, just some clarity on what the police can and can't do. And there's nothing wrong with that. Um, but just to be clear, um, we're not spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in, in noise pollution issues. Um, so, you know, but I think, um, you know, Commissioner Goldman heard it on the campaign trail. She raised it. Um, I think we've got a heightened sense of awareness that people are concerned about it. And the, um, and the, um, and the, uh, police chief, you know, will ask them to come back and just give us, you know, a brief synopsis of what the rules are in the next meeting. Um, but I appreciate the public comments and, um, and, and the discussion. So with that, we're going to move on to item 12D, which is, um, candidate qualifying requirements. And Vice Mayor Sefchen.
Mayor, if, if, if I may, I want to refer, defer this discussion to when the city manager talks about the campaign signs. Especially I think that goes hand in hand, it's a little, it makes a little bit more sense.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. It, yeah, like I've said, every, every, um, campaign cycle, we seem to have, you know, the anomalies of the campaign and the frustrations for the candidates. Um, you know, um, issues come up and then there's always a little, we've got cleanup issues. So I appreciate you bringing it forth. But since we deferred that other item, we will defer 12D along with it. So, um, last item on our list is item 12E, which is a rotation schedule for physical attendance at meetings. Um, Mauricio.
Uh, mayor, I have requested this. It was in Allen.
No, with the Golden Shores thing?
It's after this one.
Oh, I didn't have that.
Okay, um, I had requested this item to be placed as a discussion. Because as you know, uh, earlier the week, I have sent an email to the entire commission asking them what their preference was as far as attending. Uh, because we need to ensure that we do have a quorum physically present here in the chambers in order to be able to conduct a commission meeting. Um, it'd be a lot easier to have, um, you five speak amongst yourselves and try to decide on a rotation schedule. Or if you all like, I can do one and try to make it as fair as possible. Um, I do apologize, I did plan on having one here, but I had some, uh, difficulties and, and some other things that I needed to take care of before, uh, I could show that. So, like I said, it's just basi-
Okay, yeah.
Um, and if you will, just picture a line of, of the five commissioners just basically rotating after each commission. So if you think about it, over the course of a five-month period, each commissioner would attend three meetings in person and two meetings via Zoom. Um, but again, it's also the commission.
Right. What I would say, okay, what I would suggest, Mauricio, is why don't you ask for volunteers? Okay? And then, you know, because some people might have an objection to want to come to the commission chamber, ask for volunteers. And then if you're short, then go through the rotation.
Okay. So as of right now.
So. Right. So. Yeah.
Permission to be in person. And it's in person.
So I, I don't mind being in person and, and, and I'm glad we were able to pull this together. But it is very challenging to participate like this because, uh, we don't have anyone in front of us. We can't see ourselves and keeping the mask on while you're speaking is, is very, very challenging. But I also understand that, you know, Alex lives with his, you know, elderly mother-in-law and, and the mayor has another who's older as well. So I don't mind coming in. If we could possibly have additional, you know, software, IT or something to make it a little bit more interactive for, for us that are sitting here.
Yeah, and, and to that point, you know, we do have screens or we did have screens here on the dais, but they were some older cameras that aren't functioning correctly.
I see, okay.
So hopefully, I, I can promise you that it will be there for the next meeting, but we are working towards having, uh, something that's easier to look at.
Because I also imagine the people that are participating, they can't see us. You know, we look like little ants to them, so it's.
They can see exactly what's on that screen.
Right, exactly. And I would very-
Very far away, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you look like medium-sized ants, actually. Yeah. Okay, so.
If I, may I chime in?
Yeah.
I think that. Make the schedule and then, um, let's say that, that, that it's, it's Alex's turn to be, to be on, on, you know, here. Uh, but he feels strongly that he doesn't want to. Then, then he can negotiate, you know, then we can, like that volunteer part coming. Like, sure, I'll come in for you or whatever.
Okay.
Um, and I think that way there's, uh, everybody has the option, right? And, and we can be as kind as our schedules allow. But I would say, please, can we turn the air conditioner on earlier next time? You guys are lucky you're home. It's really hot in here.
It's hot.
And this is, this is, this is, I'm not helping, but.
I, um, I, I appreciate the temperature in here. And, and, and just for the, I, I volunteer. So even if it's this setup, I, I will, you know, take one for it.
Commissioner Goldman, any preference?
Either way, either way. I'm fine either way. I can come in or stay home.
Okay. And mayor, your preference would be either one?
Yeah. I, I think we ask for volunteers. And then like, so for instance, if we only get two volunteers, Alex and I are up next, obviously, because we didn't sit in this meeting. But then I would just, you know, I would say it's Alex and me. And then, you know, we can put the other three commissioners, the vice mayor in alphabetical order. And those are the requirements, you know, going forward if, if, if somebody, you know, if, if we need to fill the other seats. Um, I do think that. I do think that if IT can't have a screen, they, I think they should maybe have a screen on a portable cart, you know, sitting there like where the podium, it might be, where you can see, kind of like what we see on the laptops. That would be helpful, I think, for the commission. Otherwise, I'd say that when you come, bring your laptop. You know, not that you need it to communicate, but I think maybe bring in your laptop. The other thing I would tell you is that, like this, I have to run the meetings different because people have to raise their hand, because there's a delay when somebody speaks and when I hear it. And that delay is very difficult for me to run the meeting. I couldn't hear half of the resolution, half of the, you know, the, you know, when I'm calling for a, for a, you know, for a sign, and I couldn't hear a lot of it. So I'm gonna have to change how I run the meeting a little bit. I don't, I don't think, I think I'm gonna talk to IT. It would be better if we didn't use the speakerphone in the chambers. If we could have maybe a headset or something that was direct, I think it would be cleaner. Because the speakerphone in the chambers, it's not that easy to hear you guys, especially with your masks on. That's why I wear headphones, you know, even at home or in my office, because it's just, I just get a much better, you know, audio experience. So, but, but again, but for the sake of this item, my, my preference would be volunteers and then a mandatory slate, and then we, and then we rotate from there.
Okay, thank you, that's all there was. Okay, and we have one more discussion item, Mayor, which is the Golden Shores entrance and exit gates.
Yes, so I apologize for adding this on late. I was in a meeting yesterday with some residents from Golden Shores, and I know that this has been brought up before for many years. And they are very frustrated, and, you know, in all transparency, I live in Golden Shores, so if this was ever an item that we voted on, I probably would, would not participate. But what I wanted to put out there is, how does the rest of the commission feel about what they have been requesting for, for many years? Which is some sort of gate or exit entrance that would stop or deter people that don't live there from driving through, in order to cut through traffic?
But that's not a city issue, that's a, that's a special taxing, that's a residence issue. Because I got the same issue on Atlantic Island, you know, where folks wanna, you know, we've had this debate, raging debate over putting a gate in for years. And it's a residence issue, you know, because the residents would get, would pull a special taxing district together, and then, you know, and then, and then pay for it. I mean, so, do, is a residence requesting the city pay for it?
Technically, yes. Their request was, and again, I am just letting everybody know what they feel very strongly about. And again, because I live there, I'm trying to stay away from there. But they feel that because they are paying taxes, that they should not have to pay for this, and they feel this should be a city mandate. Now, I know Chris and I have spoken about this for many years, many times, so I just wanted to get some clarification for those that are listening, so they have an understanding of what the process is, because there's some confusion on their end. How would this work if they wanted to do this? Because we don't have an association there, so it's not like a condo board that can just vote. How would that technically work if they wanted this to happen? And I apologize, I know we might not have the answer right now, but just some direction as to how we can move this forward to get an answer for them, whether that be yes or no.
I think that, I think Buzz, right, this is a taxing district, it's a, this is a taxing district issue. This is like a, a non-ad valorem issue, right?
Yeah, we have, we have the, there's guidelines from the county. There is, I don't know whether it's a law or a county order or what, but we've gone through this a number of times with both people in Atlantic Isle and in Golden Shores. And I know some of the long-timers in Golden Shores have been through this before, particularly Juan Crespo, and Claudia's got the documents on this. What we could do is the same thing we did with Atlantic Isle. I mean, we'd be happy to discuss it with them, but maybe we should send them what the criteria is, which we have in writing, it's a, I think it's a county ordinance. There's a process, and it's written in, you know, that we can, we can give them the paperwork that they need, and they can review it, and we'd be happy to meet with them, you know, to go over what's required.
But, let me be clear. Let me be clear, the city can't pay for this. Because if we do, then we should pay for every security at every condo, we should pay for, you know, which is the one north of your neighborhood, Golden Gate? You know, I mean, you know, basically, basically, we're gonna own security for every neighborhood then. And we don't, you know, that's not, that's not a municipal function. I mean, we have a police force, obviously, that's a municipal function. But, but, you know, it's tricky, because if you want 24-hour guards, you gotta privatize the streets, you know, and then, you know, you gotta privatize the streets. If you, you know, if you don't want to guard it, I mean, but Chris, like Chris said, we've looked at this Atlantic Island 10 times over the years, and we always shy away from it, you know? And, and so that's, you know, ultimately, ultimately, we don't want to, we don't want to own the streets. You know, the neighborhood doesn't want to own the streets. But it's doable, it's doable, it would just make your taxes go up because you'd pay for it through a special taxing district. You don't have to have an association. You know, you could get together and get the property owners to vote and petition it, and have a special taxing district. So, and so, you know, I agree with Dana.
Well, the others, great, I mean, so those roads are public, right? So you couldn't have a gate in, you couldn't have, you could only at best have a soft gate, right? Unless you privatize, but wouldn't all the owners have to join in the petition of that sort?
Let, let Chris proper the, proper the rules. It's, there's rules for all this, and I don't know what they are off the top of my head.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that I, that I did mention to the neighborhood, we are putting, and I mentioned this at budget time, on the public roads, which all the entrances to Golden Shores are public. We are, and we've started with Golden Shores. We've got the license plate readers up on the three entrances, one is already active, and the other two, as soon as we get the power to them, they'll be active too. That is a significant security measure, as we know from our experience throughout the city.
Yeah, and Chris, and I apologize, I should have mentioned that, that is very much appreciated. It's not being ignored. I think this was just a question that's been lingering for them for a long time. And I would just like, you know, to make it very clear, what is the process? What they have to do? And then they decide, as a neighborhood, whether they want to go in that direction.
Yeah, and like I said, the best thing we can do is give them the packet, let them absorb it, read it, we'd be happy to meet with them about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, the good news is, there's no need to speculate on this one. There's county ordinances in place, it's been done before, and basically, it's, you know, it's pretty cut and dry. But, like I said, the city can't pay for this, I can tell you. Because it's just, it'll open up a Pandora's box of, you know, us paying for a lot of other places. And, and my island's, you know, my, you know, my island had the same attitude at one point. Why can't the city pay for this, you know? And so, and we had to shut them down on my island as well, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mauricio, is there any, anything else tonight?
We have a citizen's forum, we have about three, four comments. I'll try to read through them quickly. The first one comes from David Rodriguez, 17475 Collins Avenue. And his comment is, "Nothing is more important in your role as city officials than caring for the safety of your residents. So we are bringing before you a very important problem that needs your immediate attention. Bad drivers down Collins Avenue. This is what I suggest, enforcing your own speeding laws. We do not need empty police vehicles, we need them to be manned and citing bad drivers. We need to make right turns only on green lights, at least during the day. We need turn signals. We are scared and afraid to walk down Collins Avenue or cross the streets." Do you want me to go through all of them, or do you want to address them each individually?
Um, no, I mean, we can address them, you know. Clearly, we have stepped up enforcement on Collins Avenue. The police cars often don't sit unmanned, they sit in the middle of Collins Avenue with their lights on, which has been pretty significant. And I think if you, if you do speak to the chief, and we can have the chief again report on this, you know, the average speed is lower. Now, I don't disagree that it is not comfortable to walk along Collins Avenue, because the sidewalk is right along the edge of the road. But this is why we've tried to create walkways on the inner part of the city. This is why we have a pedestrian bridge over, you know, that connects North Bay Road. We have a pedestrian bridge over 163rd Street. The idea is to get folks off Collins Avenue as best we can, and create interior walkways to make it safer and better to walk. But, but, you know, traffic enforcement is a constant issue, and we're, and I think, you know, I think we've actually done a pretty good job of upping our enforcement over the last couple of years. And the police have got a lot of statistics that speak to that. Does any other commissioner want to speak on that issue?
I, I agree, I think that, I think there's a lot of police presence, and I think that the trend has been in a very, in a very positive direction in terms of, you know, monitoring and so forth, so I would, I would agree.
Okay, Mauricio, next comment.
One comes from Harriet Cutel, 16711 Collins Avenue. FAR, density, etc. Most of us are not zoning lawyers. We don't understand zoning jargon. Please translate terms into layman's language. With reference to property and properties being discussed, the public should be told of the zoning which existed when the property was last sold, what upgrades are being considered by the commission for the current owner, all in layman's terms. Also, could you show us the current zoning of all areas of Sunny Isles with translations into terms ordinary residents could understand? FAR is not helpful.
I don't disagree, it's complicated. It's very complicated, between FAR and as of right, and, you know, the one thing that I would tell the resident to watch out for is the V-word. And the V-word is variance. And what a variance means is that we are deviating from our, from our underlying, you know, zoning or our underlying basket of rights that that property owner has. When we deviate from that, sometimes there's a good reason to deviate, but sometimes, you know, we're deviating for other reasons. And that's why we, you know, we tend to be, you know, we tend to frown upon variances. But I don't disagree, it's complicated, and we will try to do a better job when we have a zoning application before us and putting it in layman's terms. I do try, honestly, I know I do, because it is complicated. And, and so, but I, but I don't, I don't disagree with you. It's complicated, and we'll try to do a better job. Any comments from the commission?
No, I, I agree with you, it is, and then, you know, and when you talk about it for so long, after a while, you kind of assume that everyone understands what you're talking about, which makes it a lot worse. So there is a way to do it, which is still difficult, but at least make it a little bit easier for people to understand. That'll be a huge improvement for most people.
Yeah, but the last time I wrote an article about density, I compared it to checkers, about checkers on a checkerboard stacked three high and moving checkers around. So I tried to, I tried to, I called it TDRs in the game of checkers. I wrote an article, I don't know, five or six years ago, regarding it, trying to explain a little bit about how that works. But the fact is, we'll try to do a better job.
I was just gonna add, not just in terms of zoning issues, but in general, like when we're making any changes to the code, often we're just presented with what we're changing it to, and, or what the changes are, but we're not showing the full context, right? Like, I think the example for today would be the antisemitism language. You know, we were, we're just showing, we're putting in the agenda, well, here's the four things we're adding. But we're not showing what we're adding it to. So the reader who's just looking at the agenda can't, can't see what the full, what the final product would look like. So I think we could, sometimes there's places where we could do a better job just providing a fuller picture.
Got it. Okay, Mauricio?
Okay, the next two comments are related to the Kings Point Drive construction. I'll read them quickly, both of them at the same time. The first one is from Monica McKenzie, addresses 220 Kings Point Drive. It reads, "Instead of worrying about noise pollution, we, the residents of Kings Point Imperial Pandemonium, hope that Commissioner Goldman, who's supposed to represent our area, who voted for the construction of the Marina Del Mar buildings, would not advocate for our community and would be concerned about all the damages this destruction is causing to our street and our building. Cars are hell. People in our building are getting sick with asthma, with all the dust. Our cars are getting devalued by the constant dirt. We're having to drive in this roadway, which is full of metal plates and potholes. Our building is always dirty for all the dust which flows from the piles of dust. Our street and parking lot never flooded before this construction, and now it floods with any rain. Please advocate for what matters." And the next one is from Ilaria Laporte. I'm sorry, she didn't provide an address. I'm sorry, yes, she did, it's also 220 Kings Point Drive. And it says, "I sent this email to have a chance to read my message in the meeting today at 6:30 PM. About the construction of Marina Del Mar, I have a lot of concerns. It's not only noise pollution and increased traffic. Problem is environmental and health. Our street is damaged and also our building, cars and hell. People and kids in our building are getting sick with all the dust. I can't leave my window, I can't leave, open my window and door. All my windows have to shut down. Our cars are getting devalued for the constant dirt. I broke, I broken my car one time for a rough street. I paid $700 to fix it. Our building is always dirty for all the dust. Baseball, parking lot, balcony, all dirty. Our street and parking lot never flooded before this construction, and now it floods with any rain, also with small rain. Our canal is brown and debris went inside more than one time. I have video and photos. I really worry about that because now it's already one year since the beginning of this construction. This is three years, and we can't live like that for three more years. This is not safe, this is not acceptable, this is not an industrial area families live in. We need real actions from the city, please work for our community."
Okay, Chris, obviously, and I've gotten, I've gotten a few, I've gotten a few calls as well. So typically, when a developer builds a building like they're doing there, they take care of their neighbors, especially if they're causing dust and what have you. There's been some misconceptions over, they're building a new seawall, which is part of the, part of the process. And I've had a couple residents believe that they were delivering building materials, and they were dumping them in the canal and what have you. But, but some of the, some of what people are seeing is the building of the new seawall. But Chris, they should be mitigating the dust. I mean, if, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if, I see your fingers there, okay. They should be mitigating the dust. You know, so I, I think it would be good if you talked to the Brunetti organization and say, you know, we're getting the kind of feedback we're getting from the neighboring building, do they have a, do they have an accommodation to clean the building or the cars or what have you, like, like most developers do?
Yeah, we'll go after that. I mean, code enforced, code compliance has been out there. I just got an update, just, just earlier this evening, that Stan had sent me, that Franklin, you know, was out there with the project manager for Brunetti, you know, made some progress. Obviously, the significant difficulty there, they own and they're building on both sides of the street, and they're putting in all-new utilities in the roads, which makes it that much more complicated during construction.
Can I add something, Mayor?
Yep.
I had spoken length to Giuseppe, I think that's the husband of the woman that left the comment. And I think that their biggest concern was just the day-to-day. They have three young children, they walk, you know, she's out there with a stroller. I can't imagine being out with a stroller in that area. I went and took a look at it myself, Chris and I talked about it at length because I also got a lot of phone calls about this. So there are areas there that, and I'm not, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know the specifics, but that looked like they can be fixed fairly quickly. If we can just try to please stay on top of it, because they are, that is a very small building. And I do remember when they came in, there was a lot of them, I think there were like 40, 50 people that came in against the project, and we all promised them that if our best, what the staff would do their best to make sure that it wasn't so disruptive. And if you drive down there, it is extremely disruptive. So anything that that can be done, I know would be very much appreciated.
Okay. And, but Chris, the main, but also, you know, I mean, the dust issue next door, they should be taking care of that. There's no question, you know, that's, um, you know, the, the neighbors may not have recognized that this is, this is usually pretty typical that, you know, that you go make a deal. Brunetti may not even realize it, you know, the organization may not even realize it. So we'll see. But if you could, but you can follow up on that and, you know, if, if, if you want me to call them, I can call them as well, so. Um, Mauricio, any, what else we got?
This one comes from David Elias, who's addresses 189th Street. And his comment reads, I was told I could attend this session to discuss the need to have a traffic light added to the corner of 189th Street and Collins Avenue where people cross to get to the beach. They are blinking yellow lights that cars do not stop for. There have been accidents and near-death accidents with pedestrians crossing and cars not seeing those people crossing. Please let me know when I can bring this matter into the commission.
That, that, that's an easy one. The state has promised, they, 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 they took our suggestion about six, eight months ago and they're, you know, they're working on the plans for, they are gonna put a signalized light there. You know, they, they, they realized that that wasn't the right solution. Um, I don't remember if we have the timing on that yet. I know, Susan, do you, do you know if we got, um, I think we, did we get something recently from them about the timing on that signal light? I do not remember, but I know they're working on it.
They originally had told us that they were hoping by the end of the calendar year, but that is not, no longer likely.
Yeah, I didn't expect that one, but they are working on those plans and that is a total state project. But they are putting a signalized light there.
And I agree, they blow through those, those, you know, those crosswalks that light up green. I mean, people just aren't used to them yet. The other one is the corner of Collins and 163rd by, um, by the Shell Station. I am a nervous wreck because it's a little around the curve. So, you know, I, I, you, you just can't step onto the street because the cars come flying around the curve and it, and they don't stop. So, you know, while I agree that, you know, they've been, the, the DOT's been more vigilant about putting those kind of crosswalks in with those flashing lights, people don't pay attention to them, you know? So, um, so anyway, yeah, so I don't disagree, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that, um, that at least they're, um, they're, they're working on it. And I, I know that there were bollards up, they put up temporary, they put up bollards in the road as well, the, the candlesticks, and they would just get run over. You know, they got run over, so.
Yeah, they had, they had a few accidents there, a couple, you know, a few rearenders over there.
Yeah.
I know it's true that that, that rearender, she stopped, but the person behind her didn't, right? And still right under her.
Yeah, yeah. So people are not used to, they, they just don't look at those flashing green lights as being a traffic signal yet. You know, they don't do it and I don't know that they're going to because I watch it, when I go down to my warehouse, Biscayne Boulevard's got a bunch of them. People blow through them all the time and people are walking across the street as they blow through them. So, you know, it's just not, it's just not in the, in the psyche of the drivers. Um, uh, it's no excuse, but the fact is, is just, it's just not working. So people have to be, you know, we, we gotta find better solutions. Mauricio, what else we got?
And David just added, um, if there's a sign that can be put up in the meantime or something to show the, the speed of the car traveling.
Again, we can make a request at DOT, but it's not our, you know, we don't own it and we can't, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't put a sign up if we wanted to. Um, we've got a, all that is through the state, through the State Department of Transportation. It's amazing they agreed to the light because they never agree to lights. It takes a, I mean, it takes, it takes an act of God to get them to put a light in. So I'm very pleased to hear that they agrees, that, that they agree to the light, but, um, David, we'll, we'll ask the city manager to, you know, make a request to them to maybe put a little bit more intensity on that, on that in the meantime. Thank you.
But, um, if I may, Mayor, we are putting in the stationary speed lights on, on Collins as well, so that may help a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see. Maur-
Okay, and then we have Ari Steiger.
Ari, go ahead. Name an address.
Hi, hi, everybody. First, I want to congratulate the new old commissioners for re-electing. Second thing, uh, Chris, did you say they have a new department for what? For licensing? Chris?
You gotta go off mute.
Okay, am I there?
You're there.
All right. Yeah, Ari, say that again, I didn't hear you.
We have a new licensing department? What, what, what is the new department?
Well, we have a combined department. We have a combined department of planning, zoning, licensing, code compliance.
Because, you know, every, every tenant is complaining that it takes too long to get an occupation license from the city and all those papers and paperwork and paperwork that they keep coming back and forth all the time.
Yeah.
So, and second, on the renewals, the owner of the building or whatever, or the premises has to authorize it. None of the cities is requested to authorize a renewal application. Why can we change? I spoke about it before and it shouldn't be authorized because it's just a nuisance to authorize it. So.
Okay, we, we, we can, we can take that up offline. We'll, we could, we'll be recording and talk about it, all right?
Okay.
All right.
So basically, that's it. The other thing is the water on 163rd Street, which was not resolved. It was resolved in the corner.
It was better, I was watching it during this rainstorm. It, it took until the last day before it started to flood there. So I, I think there was, there was efforts to clean that out, I know that.
Yeah, they, they cleaned up the catch basin by the office building, by the new office building, but they didn't clean up any of the other catch basin and it's been sitting there for two days when it's raining.
Okay. No, we're, 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 we're getting, we're actually, no pun intended, we're getting deeper into that now.
Okay.
All right.
That's about it.
Okay.
Go home.
Thank you, Ari. All right, stay safe. Thank you. Mauricio?
That's it, Mayor, we're done.
Okay. Um, not bad. What time is it? Okay, um, two hours and 47 minutes, it looks like. So, um, I wanna thank everybody for attending our meeting. Um, again, this was the new kind of hybrid format.